I now call the March 18th, 2020 meeting of the Hampton School Board and Budget Hearing to order. Ms. Bowers, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here. Please let the record reflect that all school board members are present and in attendance. Would everybody please join me as we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to apologize for the delay in starting the meeting and the budget hearing. We encountered some technical difficulties, but we've straightened them out now. And before we move to the next item of business, which is 1.03, Adoption of the Agenda, I'd first like to say that with this school board, we are held bound by law, actually, to approve a budget prior to April 1st and present it to the City of Hampton. As you know, we have already canceled the March 25th meeting. So at this meeting, after we go through everything, we will be voting on the budget. One of the things we wanted to do, though, in light of the coronavirus and the COVID-19, is to make sure that this board lead by example. Therefore, tonight, we are following the Rule of Ten that has been set up by not only the governor, but also by the Center for Disease Control, the CDC, where no more than 10 people gathered together for a meeting. You will notice that we are also practicing social distancing here tonight, the board members are. So we have spread out. The only people on the dials are the members of the school board and the school board clerk, our superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith, and our school board attorney, Ms. Nancy Reeves, are seated in the audience. So we are following the Rule of Ten, and we are modeling social distancing. Another thing I'd like to point out is that this is a meeting, a public meeting, where we would expect to have speakers. We have anyone who is interested in speaking in another room, and they will, at some point, once they want to speak, trade places with the school board attorney, and that'll be brought in so we can keep at the maximum of 10. Moving on with that, I wanted to just say and explain all of that because your board does believe in leading by example. Moving on, Item 1.03, Adoption of the Agenda, is their motion.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the agenda as presented with one exception. I move that we change Section 5 from deliberation to action.
Second?
It has been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Henry that we keep tonight's agenda as presented with the exception of moving Item 5 to action. Any discussion from board members? Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Now we move to Item 2, which consists of Item 2.01, Minutes of the School Board Meeting of March 4th, 2020. That is under our consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
It has been properly moved by Mr. Samuels and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there any discussion from board members? Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is Item 3, Superintendent and Staff Reports, and for that, I'll turn it over to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Jeffrey Smith.
Madam Chair and members of the board, at this particular time, I would ask that Ms. Dorch, our CFO, would come forward, and she will provide the board with an overview of the recommended amendments. And so I would ask that Ms. Dorch would come forward at this time, and she will provide the board with specific information relative to the amendments.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It is my pleasure, Vice Chair, excuse me, Chair Cherry, Vice Chair Kilgore, school board members, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton community. It is my pleasure to present proposed amendments to the fiscal year 2021 Superintendent's Recommended Budget based on the release to school divisions of the approved General Assembly's budget. Tonight, we will talk about the impact, which is to Fund 51, our Food and Nutrition Services, and Fund 50, the School Operating Fund. So starting with Fund 51, we are projecting to receive an additional net $34,000. And those funds are coming from the School Mills Expansion Program. This program was initially introduced by the governor and was approved by the General Assembly. And what this program will allow us to do is to offer free lunch to students who are eligible for reduced-price lunch. So currently, within our division, we do offer free breakfast for our reduced-price lunch students, but this will allow us to now offer free breakfast and lunch for that group of students. Now, because we are making that recommendation, we also had to take out of our cash sales the money that we were projecting for reduced-price lunch meals. So that's why you have a net impact of $34,000. So on the expenditure side for Fund 51, we are recommending to increase our compensation supplement by 0.5%, so that will increase from 2% to 2.5%. And then we are also recommending, within Fund 51, to add $1.50 per hour market adjustment for all technology specialists. Now, moving to our School Operating Fund, Fund 50, we are projecting an additional $2.6 million that will bring the School Operating Fund to $229 million. And as we look at the General Assembly's budget, in total, between state revenue and state sales tax, it would be $146.3 million. With much of that increase coming from a $1.7 million compensation supplement, the state governor's, excuse me, General Assembly has approved a 2% compensation supplement beginning July 1, 2020, for all standards of quality or SOQ-funded teachers and support staff. Also, there's additional funding for infrastructure and operations per pupil. This replaces what we know as supplemental lottery funds, and that's about $800,000. And then additionally, an additional investment of $100,000 into the Early Childhood Program. So with the $2.6 million of additional revenue, we are recommending the following changes to Fund 50. First, increasing the compensation supplement for teachers and support staff from 2% to 2.5%. That will cost an additional $728,000. The total cost for a 2.5% raise is $3.6 million. Then, an increase in our contribution to New Horizons, and that is based on updated information that we received for their budget. A Tier 3 Intervention Coordinator. This is to support Tier 3 needs, to coordinate those services for those students, and this will be a temporary position for next year. Then adding a Middle School Tier 2 Intervention Coordinator. Additionally, a mental health service provider. Two additional school security officers, based on increased enrollment and program needs. One high school English teacher. This is based on some changes in our program design at the high school level. Additionally, a needed market adjustment for our school nurses, and this would add $1,500 to their annual pay. Additionally, the $1.50 per hour increase for all remaining technology specialists. Adding those additional state funds to our pre-K program, and also for the governor's academic school year program as well. And then adding some additional funds for capital needs within our school-level buildings. And then lastly, as we are currently in a time where we are still noticing some changes within our economy, and also just wanted to make sure that we put some protection within our budget for any enrollment losses that we may could experience, we are recommending a $1 million enrollment loss slash state sales tax loss. That is if we do not meet our revenue projections. But if we do meet them, then we are proposing to use those funds for one-time expenditures in next year's budget. But we will monitor that throughout the next school year. So in total, based on the General Assembly's budget, that will bring the total for all our funds to $264 million. That concludes all of the changes, and I will now open up for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dorch. Are there any questions by board members? Yes, Ms. Henry?
I just wanted to comment. I was so pleased to understand that we put in that last item that you mentioned because it's wonderful to be able to give the 2.5 increase to teachers in addition to what we've built into the budget already for the adjustments to the salary scale. So they're going to get closer to 3, pretty much 3% across. It just sort of depends on decompression issues with the salary scale. But I've lived through some times when governors would say the revenue isn't coming in that we projected for this budget, and we're going to freeze 2% of the biennium. And that tended to be the times when teachers remember being told, "I'm sorry, you can't use any paper this month because we had to freeze all those funds." Or, "These positions are going to actually have to be cut because we had to freeze the funds, and there's no other place to find the money." So to have that contingency is very important and very wise on your part. So I was very pleased to have that explained to me, and thank you very much for continuing to be prudent. It's nice to get excited about the increase, and we certainly thank our representatives and the Senate for, both houses, for adopting this budget that is beneficial to K-12 education. But when the sales tax doesn't come in, the governor, the federal government spends money it doesn't have. And I expect they're going to do a whole lot more of that lately. But the state of Virginia is by law not allowed to spend money it doesn't have, and so that ends up being telling us we can't spend money we don't have. So I appreciate you being prudent with that. Thanks, Ms. Dorch.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Henry. Any other board members? Were you looking to say something, Dr. Smith?
Could you, yes, thank you so much, Madam Chair. The last item on the expenditure, the enrollment state sales tax loss, could you sort of elaborate on that just a little bit? Because if I'm understanding it correct, we are going to move that to next year budget, right?
Yes, so within our budget, we are expecting an increase in enrollment just based on our projections of 575 students. But in the event that we do not see that large of an increase, wanted to make sure we protected our revenue projections. So if we do have 100 students less, then we already have a spot within our budget that could account for that loss in students.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad that we're doing that with the funds rather than trying to do something else like, you know, add to some type of salaries and things of that nature this year, and then have to come back next year and start laying people off and stuff like that. So that's a good move. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other comments from board members? Okay, thank you, Ms. Dorch. Thank you. Did you have one, Mr. Samuels? Oh, okay. All right, so you were down there talking to yourself. Okay. You know, we're far enough to do that from each other. Okay. All right. We're now going into the budget hearing portion of our meeting. So we're going to Item Number 4, Hearing of Any Delegations or Presentation of Any Written Communication Regarding the Superintendent's Proposed FY 2020-2021 School Operating Budget. Ms. Bowers, I have received one. Have you received any additional ones?
No, I'm not.
Would you please read the protocol?
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Speakers' comments on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and/or defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. And before I call on our speaker, I just want to point out that you heard me earlier in the beginning of the meeting talk about how careful this board is being as it relates to COVID-19 and the spread of germs, and we want to make sure that we lead by example. And I hope, Mr. Foley, you can get this on camera. But one of the things we decided to do was, you just saw Ms. Dorch speak, and we've got a speaker who is coming up now, and she'll be at that same podium. So one of the things we wanted to do was completely disinfect the podium as we do in our schools, but I'm going to call on Joshua Hayes, who is currently standing at the podium, who's going to explain what we're doing.
All right. How y'all doing tonight?
Just fine, thank you.
My name is Joshua Hayes. I'm with ABM. We are disinfecting the schools. This is our gun, is an electrostatic gun. So what it does is we put our disinfectant in here, which is the green stuff. We use a hospital-grade type of disinfectant to get all the nooks and crannies. So pretty much you just stand back, and it just sprays in at 360 degrees. And now that is disinfected, and now we're all good to go.
And we're doing that in our schools.
Yes, ma'am.
That is amazing.
Every single school nook and cranny, any corner you can find in the school, we're doing it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hayes.
You're welcome.
Thanks for demonstrating that. And now I feel very comfortable calling. Yes, sir.
So he's just spoken to Mike, so he's going to do that once again before we have a speaker come back? It would be great.
He said he does it every single time. He spoke away from the mic.
Okay.
He made a point to do that. He stood back. Okay, our speaker is Ms. Stephanie Afanjah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening to our superintendent, to Chair Anne Stephens Cherry, to Vice Chair Joe Kilgore, to the entire board, and to the Hampton City citizens. My name is Stephanie Jackson Afanjah, and I just wanted to come here this afternoon or this evening to commend the division's leadership for its structured and organized response during this time of crisis. As a parent to two Hampton City School students, I felt incredibly informed and very confident in the clear and timely information that I've been receiving. I know this type of response takes weeks and weeks to organize, and so I commend the leadership for starting early and as a result of what they saw was coming ahead of them. I just appreciate the leadership and its continued commitment to excellence during this pandemic. I also wanted to say that for over the past 12 years, I've owned a mental health practice that primarily services some of the most vulnerable young people in our agency, in our city. And some of these vulnerabilities include poverty, homelessness, violence, unemployment. Of all the interventions that we employ for them, we have found that youth have benefited immensely from organized sports. When I was here a couple of weeks ago, I learned that the budget included the addition of volleyball as an intramural sport to our middle schools program. I was extremely thrilled about that. I was thrilled at this new opportunity for our students because I know firsthand not only the social and emotional benefits, but also the cognitive benefits of organized sports for our children, especially at the tender middle school age. There is no shortage of research that supports positive associations between sports like volleyball and overall functioning, self-control, work efficiency, decreased absenteeism, fewer work errors, and decreased substance abuse. Additionally, it increases self-esteem, improves quality of life, distracts young people from the daily hassles, and allows better blood flow in the brain. The benefits just go on and on. I also know because two of my own children are student athletes, and so I'm able to observe those benefits firsthand. I am just happy to know that the board is in favor of adding sports programs like this even when they are not revenue-producing. I think that that is exceptional. I wanted to commend the board on that today, and I'm just so happy that you all value these outcomes versus generating additional revenue for the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bowers, I haven't received any more. Have you since you was sitting over there?
No, I have not.
Okay. Now, we'll be going back into our regular board meeting, and we'll move to Item 5, which is Action. Under Action, we have 5.01, Superintendent's Proposed Budget, 2020-2021, and Item 5.02, Student Fees for 2020-2021. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the Superintendent's Proposed Budget for 2020-2021.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Mason that we approve the Superintendent's Proposed Budget for 2020-2021. Is there any discussion from board members? Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
I have a statement I'd like to read before voting. As a member of the school board of the City of Hampton, Virginia, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the 2020-2021 School Operating Budget because my wife is an employee of Hampton City Schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the vote on the budget fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. My vote is aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 5.02, Student Fees for 2020-2021. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the schedule for student fees for 2021 as presented.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve the schedule for student fees for 2020-2021. Is there any discussion from board members? Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Now we move to Item 6, which is Information. I would like to say that we do apologize for the late start, but let me explain why that happened. Because in making sure that we practiced social distancing tonight, a lot of the cords had to be moved in places that they usually aren't. So that started feedback and some other things. But I think this is indicative of what we are experiencing in America and beyond. This can very soon become our new normal, and we must all adjust. So I would hope that the audience gives us a little slack in the way this was done tonight, but we did it in the face of trying to do what we felt was right for not only the board members, but also for what's right based on what the CDC is recommending and based on what is right with respect to what our governor is recommending. Second, I'd like to give a special kudos to our cafeteria staff. They were there from day one. They were one of, I believe, only two school divisions in the area that started feeding our children the first day of the two-week closure. They worked hard, as I was telling a reporter. We already had a plan in place, but when the governor made his announcement at, what, 2:28, I think Dr. Smith had just put up a plan and gone down his car to get his car charger. By the time he got back upstairs, the governor had said, "We're shutting down." So while everybody had to scramble, it was a good scramble because we already had some things in place, and it proved to be very, not only helpful, but many people in this community are so glad that our cafeteria staff is the kind of staff it is, and I would put them up against anybody. They're top-notch. They didn't stop to say, "Oh, my, I don't know if we can do this." They were ready, they were willing, and they were able. So I want to give special kudos to them. And then next, I'd like to give, just on behalf of the board, the outstanding kudos to our superintendent and staff. Your administrative team did an outstanding job. Teaching and learning never stopped in Hampton City Schools. We took care of our children as we would, as if they were walking into the building, and we're taking care of our staff. So we want to thank you for that. Now, Dr. Smith, before I continue on information, I will say that the next meeting of the Hampton School Board is scheduled to be April 15th, 2020. That meeting is scheduled to take place at Rupert Sargent Building. But again, with things being fluid, we'll just see how that goes, and our excellent executive director of Public Relations Marketing will keep everybody informed of when we actually will have that meeting. Now, keeping with Information Item, Dr. Smith, I understand there's something you wanted to say, but we need to call in Mr. Haynes to come back, Mr. Joshua Hayes with his squirt gun.
He already did.
He did.
Oh, you, okay, okay. So he did do it, okay. Well, let's see, he's coming, though.
We wait.
Okay, so we did. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Madam Chair and members of the school board, let me first start by saying thank you for the confidence in terms of your vote in approving or adopting the recommended budget. It says so much in terms of your understanding and the context for the journey that is ahead as it relates to teaching and learning and the overall mission of Hampton City Schools, and also the confidence in the overall leadership and the staff of Hampton City Schools because there were so many individuals involved in the development of the budget. So I want to start by saying thank you for that. Also, I want to acknowledge the fact that we have been on what I consider to be a long and challenging journey together. However, we have remained resilient and intentional in our planning and implementation on matters pertaining to COVID-19. A few highlights include, and some of which, Madam Chair, you have already covered this evening, and thank you for doing that. During the week of February the 24th, we started our intense planning around COVID-19 by updating the pandemic plan as well as educating building principals as to Hampton City Schools' plan forward if needed. Our first frequently asked questions document was sent to parents and family members as well as staff on February the 28th. On On March 2 of 2020, we forwarded to parents and staff our proactive measures to keep our learning environment healthy. A subsequent update in terms of COVID-19 FAQ document was sent to parents and family members on March 9. Additionally, we provided FAQs regarding alternative meals for students, the Grab and Go program, which certainly includes the following sites: Aberdeen Elementary School, Carey Elementary School, Langley Elementary School, Moton Early Childhood Center, Hampton High School, Sims Middle School, and Tarant Middle School. They're serving as the alternative meal sites for us. We sent another FAQ for parents, to parents to guide them through the alternative learning plans as well. And yet, another FAQ was developed, and we were able to share with staff regarding the alternative learning plans, which certainly has an embedded link so that staff can ask specific questions, and we do hope that we're providing responses in a timely manner. And yet, another FAQ was developed and emailed to staff addressing human resource questions and matters as relates, as those particular matters would relate to compensation, payroll processes, and procedures that are in place as well. And included in that particular FAQ, we also have a link that is embedded so that staff members can ask specific questions that we can respond to. We have activated a technology hotline for students, staff, and families, which is being manned Monday through Fridays, Mondays through Fridays, by staff members. We have also activated a voicemail for parents and the general public to ensure continuous support. We're continuing to keep members of our community, as well as our staff and students and faculty members and so forth, connected with us through the media in terms of media updates, and we're using social media to continue that particular work as well. We will continue to monitor and make adjustments as needed, given this very fluid situation, as you have already indicated, Madam Chair. And while most offices for Hampton City Schools are telecommuting, I want you to know and have confidence that we're continuing with the business of Hampton City Schools. We have established a very robust work agenda. We're conducting meetings through technology means, and so we're using all of the technology resources that are available to us to continue the business of Hampton City Schools. We're conducting staff meetings with our principals via using technology in terms of those avenues that are available to us, whether it's YouTube or otherwise. We're conducting meetings, and we'll continue to conduct meetings with our curriculum leaders to ensure that we're planning for the future if we need to make other adjustments as we move forward as well. So again, I want to say, as you have said, Madam Chair, and members of the board, as you have expressed to staff members, that we are grateful for their hard work and their dedication toward moving the agenda of public education and our mission forward for our young people and the families that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Any comments for the superintendent? Yes, Ms. Henry.
Well, Dr. Smith summarized a lot of actions that were obvious that they've been working on for the past month, and FAQ, that's apparently his favorite expression now. It's more than that. Hampton City Schools' leadership has been very forward-thinking in this whole process. And Dr. Cagiano and the CIA, you know, I give him a hard time all the time about acronyms. And I actually worked for the other CIA for a while, and I'm not sure the group I worked with was as bright and hardworking as the one that Dr. Cagiano has going on. The CIA stands for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and those folks have, in fact, created not just the idea of lesson plans, but actual lesson packets and learning packets for the entire system, pre-K through 12. And they did it so that teachers didn't have to, on top of their regular load, prepare those things. And also, that means that every child, not hit or miss, is getting the same quality lesson and instruction, and that's pretty fabulous. And because we know that we have been leaders, thanks to people like Ms. Smith, who was advocating for it all the time to have one-on-one computers, that we have the experience of children working daily with a device. It's not something that was issued to them this week that they don't know what to do with. It's something they've used and are experienced with, and online learning is not something they're having to figure out on the fly now. That's really significant at this point. And then people younger than fifth grade don't have a device, and not everyone has access to the internet. So printed learning packets were devised, and Dr. Smith also loves having a print shop, and he worked them to their little fingers to the bone. This weekend, this past weekend, they were printing, and principals were coming in to buildings with high-speed copiers and printing and printing and printing so that those packets were ready on Monday. It wasn't, "Oh, see, that's Monday, we'll think about planning this." It was ready. And so, you know, we're the model for the state in a lot of things, but we certainly are a model for how this was handled. And Dr. Smith and his staff deserve all the kudos in the world, and parents are getting online, saying, "This is so great, and I called and got help." That technology hotline and so forth is there, available for them. The one last FOQ you didn't mention that I've seen has to do with our staff and their health concerns, and the fact that we have, thanks to other forward-thinking from Dr. Shiflett and Dr. Smith, to have our wellness center and our pharmacy available to our staff. They've sent out information about staff, about their own health concerns, how they can get on and have a telephone conversation, and have those questions that are important to them, to all of us, answered. So just, it's wonderful to have such a responsive team, but such a proactive team. This wasn't reactionary on our part. It was planned. The governor jumped the gun on us a little bit, and we had to really get going for Monday, but it was because it was in place, and congratulations to all your team, and the CIA, and the division leadership team, and all the curriculum leaders that worked so that we have a consistent, logical progression of lessons for all of our students, even though they're not here in the building with us.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. And I was pulling out my cellphone because, as you know, the school board members don't use cellphones, keep cellphones out during meetings. We decided that during our retreat this past summer. But I was pulling it out because I got a text message from someone who works for the State Department, and you made me think about it when you talked about being a model for the state. And I immediately called Dr. Smith and read the text message to him, and the person was saying that the State Department was all abuzz about the wonderful proactive way in which Hampton City Schools is handling this. So I had read him that. So that's why I pulled my cellphone out. Any other comments from board members?
Madam Chair, if I just might say, add this in, that I was at Kroger's the other evening and was approached by a parent in the Hampton City School system, and she was complimenting us on how great a school system that we have now, that 100% accreditation, the graduation rate. She was ecstatic about everything that was going on. She had her child with her, and she wanted to make sure that I knew who her child was. But the important thing and the exciting thing was how she was excited about what's going on now with the school system. And she said that the people in the community are watching and seeing how much the school is turning and going in a positive direction. Everyone seems to be excited about everything that's going on with Hampton right now. Now, not only is the Hampton citizens, but citizens all over the place. My sister lives in Virginia Beach, and she's excited. She said, I think she was sort of making a joke. She said, "Y'all just about as good as we are now."
Yeah, that was a joke. Okay.
But I think we're doing a wonderful job.
And so many other people do as well.
Exactly.
I do appreciate that.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Madam Chair, thank you. I also want to extend thank you to Dr. Smith and the staff, but beyond that, I also want to thank our chair for all of her leadership. This has been a very trying time, and people come at her from all directions, ask her questions all the time. She has to make difficult decisions. Even the meeting tonight had a lot of moving parts before we got here. She and I started talking last Friday about whether or not we could legally meet electronically without physically being assembled. There is some policy that talks about it, but it's very restrictive. You have to have a declared state of emergency by the governor, but the only reason that you can, or the only thing you can talk about during that meeting is the emergency that's been declared. So we didn't have an option but between a rock and a hard spot because we have an obligation to give our budget to council. So I know she worked with the school board attorney. We got some help from VSPAs as far as interpretations go, and I just, again, I want to thank you for your leadership throughout this. It's been amazing.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore. I appreciate that. Yes, Dr. Mason?
Also, kudos to Dr. Smith and the leadership team in being able to handle this. I've seen some other divisions that were challenged just a bit, but they're coming along. But they're not Hampton, so we're excited. So we definitely want to say thank you. But also, just back to the budget for just one quick second, I do want to say that it is an excellent budget. And looking at the strives that have been made to look at our culture and climate, mental health, social and emotional learning, you can see that running rampant through that budget, and that's when we can truly say, "Every child, every day, whatever it takes." So definitely thank you for really paying attention to that aspect of the budget and what's happening with Hampton City Schools there. But also, overall with this entire situation, I think the community has stepped up with that. I've received several calls, inquiries, you know, asking what can we do, you know, to assist with this? You know, some parents are struggling now as they've become substitute teachers, but we have those resources in place, you know? We have organizations. I know Pastor Michael Golden with Grade Emanuel reached out to me, and he wanted to know, "Hey, what can we do, whether it's to feed the students or whatever? How can we help?" And so that's been really pleasing. And then today, I happened to see one of our very own professional school counselors over at Barron Elementary School with the Barron Knights, Ms. Sharita, Sharita Reiman Clemmons. She's actually doing her morning announcements for her Barron Knights. And so I was really, you know, it just, when I turned on my computer and all, and that popped up, it made me smile because I see that we have teachers that are really trying to go the distance to continue to add some normalcy to an abnormal situation with our kids right now. So I think we're doing some great things, not only in Hampton City Schools, but we have a pride within the City of Hampton, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mason. Any other, yes, Mr. Samuels?
I was just, I was expecting Ms. Monica to say something, but I know she has something to say about that. But Madam Chair, thank you so much for allowing me to speak, and I just want to also echo Mr. Kilgore's comment in regards to your leadership. As you know, we go through this, I would say, anomaly this season, and you have done a fantastic job keeping the border breast of conversation that you've had with the superintendent. And I just want to acknowledge your leadership and Dr. Smith's leadership through this process, being so proactive. And so I just want to acknowledge you and your staff and the leadership, and particularly John Eagle, the IT department, and his staff. Without their support with technology and so forth, we would not be able to be so successful with the Chromebooks and making sure that these things, you know, the technology, Chromebooks are within our students' hands and so forth. And so on a day-to-day basis, they're in that little space that they have at One Franklin Street, making sure that this is operating. And I would consider them, Dr. Smith, the engine that drives the technology, social media, computers and so forth, internet and so forth. So I want to acknowledge John Eagle and IT department.
Great. And thank you, Mr. Samuels. Any other, yes, Ms. Smith?
Well, I think I have to speak now.
Because I put you on the spot.
You did, and I'm trying to think of what I should say. But I guess the main thing is, everybody's touched on things I was thinking, and it's just amazing. Situations like this that are so awful and just so unprecedented, however you say that, it's just very difficult. A lot of people being stretched, a lot of people being put in situations where, you know, they're not sure if they can work, they're not sure what's going on, how they take care of the kids, just so many things they're juggling. But to see this community come together and have leadership like this, and leadership like yours, Madam Chair, and just to see them all rising is pretty encouraging and exciting. So there you go. There's how we're rounded together.
I must agree. As a matter of fact, I got, I received an email today from a former Hampton City Council person who was out of town and said that they had been looking on the internet and other things and saw that we had everything under control, and how pleased she was to see that. So I thought the fact that she took time to write that and then to say that meant a lot as well. Any other information to come from board members? Well, I think this is it, Dr. Smith, and everybody is excited, and we're happy, and we will just continue to rise to the occasion, whatever we're handed. Correct? With that said, meeting is adjourned.